Good evening, members of council for the second time this afternoon. And staff and members of the public and members of the public in the gallery and members of the public who may be watching us. I welcome to the town council meeting of November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Before we approve our agenda, we would like to acknowledge that we are meeting here today in Kaskutwick, one of the seven districts of McMoggy, homeland of the Mi'kmaq people. We acknowledge the treaties of peace and friendship, and we thank the Mi'kmaq people for their generosity in sharing their homeland with us. We are all treaty people. And could I have a motion to approve the agenda, please? Counselor Elliott and Deputy Mayor Madira Voss, I have just a few things to add to that. There will be an in-camera to deal with personnel at the end of this agenda and. But there was something else. Oh, and we are going to, in addition to the mayor's comments, we are going to add a little section on C O's comments tonight. So with those two changes, and is there anything else anybody wishes to add? With those changes, all those in favor of the agenda as amended, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, that is passed. And a motion to approve the town council, the minutes of town council meeting, October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you, Counselor McKay, Counselor Elliott, thank you for seconding those. And is there, are there any errors or omission? Missions or additions? All those in favor of approving the town council minutes, meeting minutes of October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, those are passed. Excuse me. So just briefly, comments from the mayor, we have proclaimed this Crohn's and Colitis Awareness Month. And for November of two thousand and twenty-two, I participated my second time in the mayor's bike ride for devour. It was great weather, great event. There are a few other councils there and it was not as onerous as last year. So I was very happy with that. And I also participated in the Remembrance Day ceremony on Friday at Acadia and then fall at Senataph. And also attended the Legion Luncheon. And I will just do a shout out for Thursday's budget session, my favorite time of the year, right, Barb? And I mean that sincerely, this is a really important part of what council does in setting that both the tone and the and the opportunities and the restraints for the next year. So I look forward to that meeting. And so I will pass the mic over to the C O who has a few comments.
Just a few things that I didn't want to leave until December. The first is that our Mike Long, who's attending virtually tonight, will be leaving the town. Yeah, we're really sad about it. Yeah, so Mike, we're sad and everyone's sad. Yeah, he's taken a job to be closer to family and they're going to be moving across the province. So family reasons, but will be greatly missed. He'll be done in December, but is offered to help us out until we can get our bearings and get his position replaced. So sad news to share, but wanted to share before too long. On the Remo front, Dan did a couple of interviews on our vulnerable persons registry that made multiple news outlets, including the Toronto Sun. And just letting you know, we've got a bit of coverage from that. And there's folks from across the country that are starting to reach out to Dan to see how we set up both our Remo and that system. So kudos to him. And if he's listening, I know he's pretty proud of that and he did a great job. So the election today was the day nomination day. We do have three candidates, so we will be moving forward with an election. We have Mercedes, Brian, Noel McQueen and Ian Palmer have all submitted papers. So there'll be three folks for that. And just to note that we do have to change the dates that we had set for our parks and open space kickoff. The consultant wasn't available on the twenty-ninth. So the two dates that are available are December first, which is a Thursday or Tuesday, December thirteenth. So just wanted to see what would work for council so that we can get that scheduled through Kelton.
So that was December first.
Yeah, which is a Thursday or Tuesday, December thirteenth, either one are available.
Does anybody have a preference? Or have a time that they?
We have R C and P on Tuesday.
This would be an afternoon.
Yeah, this would be, yeah. This is. Which, Tuesday, the thirteenth. Yeah, we'll do, yeah. And we had originally, I think, thought four thirty, so maybe we can try to do that so that folks can come after work and we can kick it off on the thirteenth. So that works good. Okay, perfect. And then the last thing is that we are just finalizing our staff and council holiday party. We'll be sending out some information tomorrow. We're just going to go for a meal, but it will be November thirtieth was the date we were able to secure. So look for some details tomorrow, but just placeholding November thirtieth in the evening, if you're available. And that's all I have.
Thank you. That brings us to public input. Do we have anybody in the gallery who's here for public input? Mike Long, do we have anybody online?
We do not.
We do not, and I'm assuming nobody in the gallery. So that moves us to motions from Special Committee of the Whole, October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, dealing with the Town Hall Library. I think staff put the motion list on everybody's desk. So somebody would like to. Somebody like to move that motion, please. I actually, Counselor Ingham is.
You go ahead. Okay. I, okay, I would move the committee of the whole forward to council. We are, we are a committee, we are now, we are a council now. Okay. Thank you. I was thinking, I would move the council direct staff to proceed with the planning of a co-located town hall and library at existing town hall site three, three, five, nine Main Street, and continue with the next step as outlined in this report.
Right, and the secondary, please, as Deputy Mayor Madira Voss, is there any comment, Counselor McKay?
I've got a couple, actually, maybe comments and questions. After the last one, I, I said, I didn't like the site. It's not that I don't like this, that I'm feeling unsettled by how we came to it. I feel like staff did exactly what was asked, to be honest, and packaged it so neatly that I was like, we made a eight million dollar decision in less than two hours and I was feeling a little bit squeamish over that. It was hard to believe that there were only three things that we looked at for pros and cons. Act as transportation, parking and climate change, where I just feel like there must be more to eight million dollars than that. So I have some questions that I really need to just kind of, not that we need to change it, I just need to wrap my head around.
And maybe it's a sober. Director Lake would like to come up to me.
Sorry, I'm actually sent this to you before and I just typed them up today. Brainstormed after the last meeting and put them together to try and, and they're a little bit all over the place, although they're all kind of together. And I think it was that I was trying to think holistically because we've been making one of decisions along the way that I'm struggling with seeing the big picture and a strategic outlook for the town and how we funded and how we look at it. And maybe it'll come to light in budget on Thursday as well. I don't know, but. My questions were. We looked at two sites. And only two sites, is that because they were sort of the two we owned? It was the lowest hanging fruit sort of thing. Did we look at any other partnerships like we had talked about with the Lions Hall? And then there was discussion somewhere in there that the Wolf Children Center was going to do something. Did we look at anything else or even purchasing some land or doing anything different? Or did we just say those are the two we own? So those were the two we were going to look at.
We looked around at other things, cursory level, we didn't do that type of analysis. The needs assessment, the original needs assessment we did with the working group. This site wasn't really in play at that point. There was too many unknowns around the fire department in particular. There had also, there'd also been, this would be going back a number of years, some preliminary discussion with Acadia that didn't, I mean, it didn't really go anywhere. So that was stifled at that time. But yeah, there was, there was other sites looked at. In terms of private sites, there's not a lot available that's vacant without probably demolishing something. Yeah.
Um. Sorry. I am wondering about, and I did voice this the last time, but I just need to wrap my head around it. We are, and the reason we said climate change was our biggest obstacle. And it was that we just didn't feel we could build something on land that was going to be flooded. And then I'm struggling with spending six hundred thousand dollars on a public works building. We've talked about putting parking lots down there, which will be town bought infrastructure in paving or whatever else we do, which if it floods will or have storm surges will be demolished. We are encouraging, and then there was banter afterwards too, like, oh, that might be a good place if we have to move our C and P or police or whatever else or whatever, so I'm moving people into the library, the current library space now. But we aren't willing to build anything there or at least not the library. So I'm struggling with spending money on that area of town for infrastructure when we said we really won't because we don't want to put a library there. We are encouraging the Lions Hall to be a comfort center, which would inevitably be one of the first places flooded because we said the library would be as well. We're encouraging the market to invest time, energy, space, everything down there. It too will be flooded. I'm having a hard time with the. I guess it's my own unsettling with the hypocrisy of that. So I just need to figure out how that balances out with putting other things there and investing in spaces with taxpayers' dollars for other things, just not the town and library. And those two things are conflicting in my head. And I'm not sure if there's an answer to that aside from my own comfort level or. That's what it is. I, I'm just, I'm struggling with that. But it is reality that we would be looking at parking lot. We are investing six hundred thousand dollars in the town space and we are encouraging development down there.
Yes, so you can build things down there.
Yeah.
And I think a lot of the decision was about this, when, where we have two sites. One of them is multiple meters above the other one in the realm of risk. This became, I think, from a climate perspective, the obvious decision. Our land use by law doesn't prohibit development down there. And the marsh body in far as expanding development, I don't think will be doing that either. But the existing development, some of it's going to have to live with what decisions it's made in the past. And some of it's going to have to adapt to a new reality and some of that will probably be floodproofing. I know the new building code, they're looking at actual prescriptive measures around that. So there's lots that can be done. But yeah, I mean, if we only had one site, I mean, we'd have to be looking at floodproofing ourselves.
Yes, so a library could be flip foot. If we, if someone wanted to put something there, that would be, okay. And then I'm curious, because during our N P S, we had great discussion on moving commercial up the hill. We said we are creating the problems of traffic jams, we're actually adding to climate change, we're doing all those things by putting everyone on top of one another in a small downtown core. And the goal of this building will be to service a lot of people and hopefully to make it a really great place for people to come and increase the traffic, go through it. So we would then need better infrastructure around here. And I'm really worried about how we do that, how we fund it, how we make it work. I have, and it just seems like if we only pick one site without all of that work being done, or at least some insight into how it's going to be done and how it's going to be funded feels premature. And I'm not sure if there's, that's an answer, something that can be answered right now or not, but I'm. Because I'm concerned about the tax base. I think it's going to be, we are making big decisions coming up on rec center. We've got a park study, policing review, we're moving the fire station. All of those things are going to be extremely costly. And how we change the flow of traffic through town again would be very costly. And adding act of transportation, as we've seen multiple things come through here, are very, very expensive. So I don't know how that all works together, but I just felt like it needed a sober second thought and some, a pause for an eight million dollar decision to be made in just, without a funding knowledge. I was feeling super uncomfortable.
I was just going to say that I think some of this is conversation for Thursday during the capital budget discussion. But I'm not sure there's a whole lot else that, I mean, we're making assumptions in the capital budget and the draft that's coming on certain costs.
And assumptions related to funding. And I know Mike is on the call and he said he was freezing, so it might take a minute, but he may have, oh, there he comes. He can speak to the assumptions he's got right now in that first version on the capital budget.
And apologies from the outset if I freeze while speaking. So I'm having internet problems here. I think at this stage, and for those that have looked at the package for Thursday's all-day budget meeting, there's some funding scenarios that were relatively close for the ten years. There'll be changes in the way that we do long-term debt assumptions. But I think the funding, the eight million dollar funding decision, as it's being discussed, is whether that's in the current town hall location or at the library location. I'm going to pause for a sec because you all just froze on my screen. And there you're moving again. So that, that eight million dollar decision between the two locations will still be an eight million dollar, more or less, funding scenario that we have to find dollars for. So I'm not sure the location will necessarily change that. There is the change or the, and this has been discussed in the past. So how each counselor factored it in is if it was down at the current library location, can the town hall on Main Street, that property generate more tax revenue than you might get out of the library? That, that would be the, the key difference. But at this stage, other factors like flooding were, became the predominant, from what I watched in the meetings, the predominant rationale for moving to the current location. So that's, that doesn't help Counselor McKay in terms of the final position on it. I just offer that it's still an eight million dollar funding decision, regardless of location, give or take the cost of each location. But I don't think there, when we're getting to eight million dollars, the difference won't be that large.
So what the difference would be a sale of a land and taxes into perpetuity?
Potential, yes. And then the option would be, you know, is there some portion of the land down on Front Street that would be sold in lieu of? And I don't know where that would play out or planning scenarios around that, but that would. There are potential aspects, but those aspects have been before council at previous meetings. So again, how each counselor has weighed those things vis a vis the flooding, I would leave that to the table of council. But that, that would be the difference that I think that you're referring to.
Yeah, I guess I am struggling with the funding and I'm, and I'm struggling with adding what is currently to a lot of residents, a big traffic jam at this corner and adding more to it without having a plan to mitigate it and to put active transportation in in that amount of time is, I think, prohibitive. So I'm just struggling with it. And I really don't want to see the tax rate go up exponentially based on all of the things we've got on the table, which will come out in budget, I guess, on Thursday. But. Until I see that and we have some discussion on it, I find this one tougher.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from members of council? Deputy Mayor?
I guess I just want to know where, where we have a motion and we're going to vote on the motion. Right, and so, okay, I just, I didn't know if we were going to discuss this more thoroughly again or not, or whether we.
Right now, we have a motion on the floor that we're going to vote on. I would say that some of the things, and I'm looking at Director Lake, just to confirm my understanding, some of the things that Counselor McKay has brought up are whether it's traffic or whether it's the dollars. Obviously, there are going to be other discussions. And is it within the realm of possibility that as we go forward with those discussions, we may come to a different decision on location? Or is, so for example, just to give a, for instance, if we were to. You know, there's, I don't think this is workable, but there has been talk of a, of a small roundabout. If we were to confirm that there is no possibility of a small roundabout or it is too expensive that we would revisit, I'm thinking of something of that order. Or are we, or is the decision that is made tonight, we may not go ahead because budget-wise, it may just not, it may not become feasible in the short term. But are we moving ahead with all designs based on this site? That is my understanding. Are there any, is there any exit ramp, I guess, as I'm asking?
I mean, Erin might want to weigh in on this, but I think you could always revisit the motion and come back and put a new motion on the floor at a different time.
We'll have to vote on this motion and depending on what happens, we would have.
Yeah. Yeah, if this was to pass, we would take this marching order and we would go forward with this as the site. Along the way, whether through the budget process or if council wandering, visit it, you always have that option as a council. So. Deputy Mayor?
So I appreciate where Counselor McKay is coming from, particularly with the costs and the whole question about what else is being developed down there. But I guess I just have to say, in my supporting this motion before, and I still do support it now, some of the things that I thought about in terms of one site versus the other had to do with the exercise that we did, where we built blocks, you know, to sort of look at what it would look like in the end. And the, the way that the library site would look, given the size that the building would need to be, to me was certainly not appealing. I felt it took away a lot of green space. I think there's a lot of potential for what could be done with the library site in terms of something for children or some other kind of this. I don't know, but I think it just was very congested. And the whole question of parking, I thought, was very problematic. And I thought that this site addressed the problem, the parking issue better than the other one. When we talked about the space directly behind us. And I do think that we did look at the whole traffic issue, which is going to have to be addressed on this corner regardless. So even if we were to build on the library site, we would still have to do something about traffic congestion here. And so my, my sense was that by including that in the build for this site, we're kind of addressing that traffic congestion at the same time that we're looking at this bill. So I felt that by having it here, it folds those costs in with this location as opposed to keeping them as two very distinct pieces. And the other one is I really don't think we should be thinking about selling anything. I think that it would be for future generations, I think we as municipality, you know, we're expanding. We're looking at the east end development, we're going to be growing as a community. We don't know what our needs as, as a municipality will be in the future. And I think to think about giving anything up, whether it's this property, whether it's any park or green space, I think that we may be selling future generations short. So I personally would be opposed to looking at this as a way of making money in order to offset. I think we need to be very realistic about what we can and can't afford regardless. But I don't think that that, in my view, would be something that I would factor in.
Counselor McKay?
I am not suggesting it's one or the other. That's why I asked if we looked at other spaces, because I feel like we are actually going to be adding to traffic congestion, climate worsening, all of the things we talk about when we put them in the downtown. So I, and I know it's a bit of a purple, but I just feel like we only, we only stopped and looked at two spots. We didn't actually look at anything else. So I just want to make sure we add the critical thinking to say, was there, was there an opportunity missed? Maybe there isn't, maybe it is selling this one and buying another. But I just don't want to miss the point of saying, did we ask all the questions before we make this decision? And I'm not sure that we did so. And honestly, it was because the package was so well done. It was exactly what we asked. It was almost too neat. So I was like, why does this feel unsettling? And I just wanted to make sure we're asking enough questions that it doesn't come back to go, boy, I wish I thought about that later after eight million dollars building spent and we didn't think it all the way through.
One of the problems we have with having a very small downtown, it's three or four blocks, a couple of, couple of blocks deep. I think that these are public facilities that, and this is my view, but I think it's shared by many people that those public facilities should be visible in your main, in the main place that people come to. It is unfortunate that, you know, I would have liked to see it. I pursued, as I know Mayor Cantwell did, a partnership with the Katie. I think that would have been amazing, but it didn't happen. And, you know, I, I agree with you. I am, have been concerned about the traffic as well, but of the two sites, and I don't know of any other sites that are not in the floodplain that are in downtown that would not involve us buying and tearing down buildings. I don't see an alternative if it is in the downtown and I personally believe it should be so. But I do, I am concerned, I was concerned about the traffic and we had the discussion way back when we had the first session. And so I'm, I'm looking at Alex, you know, Alex and the team around him who are going to deal with traffic. That's, that's the big thing, I think, for, for everyone. And whether that, what that means to those properties that surround us, I don't know. But it is, it is an issue that we absolutely have to deal with somehow. You're the expert. Are there any other comments, Counselor McKay?
Just one question. So what is the exit ramp? Should there be one when we get to a point where we go, oh, this is not maybe what we thought it would be? What if the mitigating factors aren't feasible, I guess? What is, because it doesn't say, like, the one we have later on says with budget considerations or something like that? Yeah, put it to budget consideration. This one does not say that. There's, it just says, this is it.
So I think the exit ramp that you always have is every year in the budget process. So this is sitting out in year five, Mike? I'm looking at you, but you can't tell four or five right now in the, in the ten-year plan. And every year it will move one year closer. And if at any point council's like, we're not ready to move, we need to make a change, that's, that's the time to do it as part of that budget discussion. You always have that ability with any of your capital programs during that discussion.
It is in year four, off the top of my head. I don't have the document in front of me and we'll obviously cover that on Thursday. So there is always that option. I would also say to council, however, both the library and the town need to start moving towards a target. And this was, became something solid that could then be researched, which may lead to some of the answers that Counselor McKay is looking for. I agree, if it, if it doesn't pan out that way, you'd have to change gears. But at this stage, I, I think if you pass the motion, and I'm saying if you're committing to this location, it allows the library and the friends of the library to work towards fundraising, allows the town staff to pursue grants. And the only thing I could, as I'm listening to the conversation, add is if we think about the C F L game, and this may seem like an odd tie-in, there was a lot of people in the downtown without traffic concerns. So if traffic is managed in the appropriate way, in a future-looking manner in terms of active transportation, micro-transit, transit, some of these concerns may not be as heavy as they feel right now. And I just throw that for food for thought.
Thank you, Director McLean. Counselor Elliott.
Um, just to say that, given what our finance director has just said, and because I concur with the deputy mayor, I'm very, very likely to vote for this one.
Council Butler.
Um, I, I had a lot of the same feelings as Council McKay. I read through it. And the first time it just, it sounded so great. Um, it was the climate thing that really bugged me the first time because, yeah, we were, we were saying, let's build it here because of the climate change flood issues. But yet we were also trying to promote the space for other people to develop on. I thought that was kind of hypocritical, but thank you, Director Lake, for explaining it a bit better tonight. I'm sort of seeing this as a ducks in the row process where I'm assuming we wouldn't just plant the live, traffic would have to come first. This would have to come first. All of this stuff would, would have to fall in line before a library just appears on Main Street, because we know it's, it's a problem. It's been a problem for a while. Traffic, pedestrian, this, you know, crosswalks, all that stuff. All of that will obviously have to be approved before the construction and all of that. That's what, that's my hope. So I, I understand like the importance of this site, because it is supposed to be very prominent in the downtown core. But all of that other stuff worries me, which is why I'm hoping that is all covered before the final, yes, it is okay to put a library at that site. So that's my comment.
Uh, that would be my assumption. We ready for questions? All those in favor of the motion as read, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. That passes. That moves us to motions and recommendations from Committee of the Whole on November 1st. And the first one is the red and blue crew request. And, uh, don't know if we're, we're not expecting another presentation, don't they? Um, stop me if we are. If somebody like to read that motion.
I can do it.
Move that motion. Thank you.
I'll do it correct in this time. I would move that council approved in principle the town's participation in a four-year pilot project to support and establish the Acadian, the Acadian red and blue crew with a commitment to an annual contribution in the amount of $25,000. This request will be forwarded to the budget process for consideration.
Thank you, Counselor Ingham. And a second for this, Deputy Mayor. Are there any questions or comments? Counselor Ingham, your light is still on. Do you have, anybody have a question or comment? Counselor McKay, your hand seems poised to push a button. No?
No, I think it was just the wording of the, of the motion that I couldn't quite grab my hand around last night. But yeah, but I think it's exactly the same. So I think.
Question.
No, I think I would, it was just the way it was worded. This request will be forwarded to the budget. Yeah, maybe we added that at the very end last time. Is that what it was?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. To make it clear that it was going to the budget process.
Any other comments or questions? Question? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. That is passed. And extension of council committee appointments. Mover, please. Thank you.
Um, I move that council approve that the council committee appointments remain status quo until December 6, 2022, as outlined in this RFD.
And a second, please. Thank you, Counselor Elliott. Uh, any questions or comments from members of council? All right. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. That is passed. And the RFD 048 2022 for the REN, and whoever moves this, would they, uh, there was a typo here. It should say to the existing parties of the REN, not Valley Waste. So if anybody would like to move that motion, just make that change, please. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Um, I move the council provide a letter of intention to the existing parties of the REN to join as a party effective April 1st, 2023.
The REN IMSA.
Sorry, the REN IMSA. Scratched everything out here. Um, to join as a party effective April 1st, 2023.
Thank you. And a second, please. Thank you, Counselor Butler. Any comments or questions from council? All right. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. That passes. And then we have motions from new business. CEO, are we having any presentations? Are we going to speak to any of these? All right. First one is, uh, which we did have at, at an earlier committee of the whole repeal of the skateboard bylaw. This would be second reading of that. Mover and a second, please. Counselor McKay.
Sure. I would move that council give second reading to the repeal of bylaw, chapter 109, repeal of skateboard bylaw number 70.
Thank you. And a second, please. Counselor Butler, any questions, comments? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. That's passed. And taxi bylaw, second reading. Counselor Elliott.
I would move that council give second reading to the amended taxi bylaw, chapter 40.
And a second, please. Thank you, Council McKay. Comments or questions?
I do have a question. Um, just, just reading it. And I, I, so it's on page six of seven, number, letter E of the general considerations and exemptions. I think that's where it is. I just have a question about the taxi-only parking. Are there designated taxi-only parking areas in town? It, that actually, okay, the, the holy, it starts at the no taxi shall be parked or left standing on any highway or street in the town for a period longer than 10 minutes between the hours of eight and 10, 8:00 AM and 10:00 PM.
No, and I'm looking at Alex. I don't misspeak, but I'm not aware of any taxi-specific locations.
No. Okay.
So that would enable us to have those if we so wish, but right now.
Okay.
There is not any.
And is there a particular, is there a particular reason why it is only 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM? That it's, I'm thinking, there, there is an idling bylaw, correct? Yes. Okay. So every morning I leave the house about 6:00 to go for a walk. And there is consistently multiple taxis by the curling club that sit idling. And I've decided over the last couple of weeks since reviewing this to sit at the picnic tables by the cemetery for up to an hour. And they sit there, idling. Cabs on, radios on, using the wifi at the farmer's market. I'm just wondering if there is a way, like the taxis are 24 hours. So is there a way to make that 24 hours instead of just eight to 10? That's just daytime. I imagine that's the busiest times, but they are still working. They are still on the clock during the overnight period. Some of them do sit outside the Anvil for 45, 50 minutes, waiting for people to promote to get rides. Um, I don't know how enforceable it is, but it is noticeable. And there's no taxi-only parking spots. They are actually just parking in regular parking spots. Some aren't even in parking spots. They're just in front of a building using the wifi. So that particular section just was, just seemed like it had a couple of points that, that could be reviewed.
So if we, I, I think that would be a non-substantial change. I think that you probably could remove the eight to 10 and just leave it no longer than 10 minutes, full stop.
Okay.
Um, and I would suggest that we move forward with that opinion. I will check with Charles after this. And if it's deemed that it wasn't non-substantial, we'll have to go back through the first and second reading. But I think for something like that, that is a fairly small change.
Okay.
Because we are at the second reading stage, so you can't alter it too much before having to kick it back through the process. But I would suggest that's likely a minor amendment. So if you wanted to remove the hours of 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM from that, we can do that.
Okay. Yes, please.
Counselor Elliott.
I just wanted some clarification. So that would mean, your light, that would mean, that would mean that it's just the idling that's the issue? Or the, using the space?
It's using the space, the way it's written. It's.
I don't like the idling either.
Well, they would be subject to that, the provisions of that bylaw, but it, the way it's worded right now is shall be parked or left standing on any highway for that purpose of soliciting business or passengers unless in a taxi standard parking space designated, which by the traffic authority, which we've confirmed right now, we do have. So you can't park your, you can't park your cab on the highway or street in town for longer than 10 minutes to wait for customers. You have to move.
So is it a matter of designating, like, there's no more than probably four taxis at one time in the run of a shift? That some park at Subway, some park at the Vills, some park at Tim Hortons, some park on the street, some park at the Curling Club, have a designated, town's not that big, have a designated like four spot from this hour to this hour, taxi-only parking for overnight? Or?
See, Alex wants to weigh in. As traffic authority, he's able to, oh, as traffic authority, he's able to designate taxi-only parking if that, if that made sense.
Like the back Wolfholt Farmer's parking lot is, is generally empty throughout the night and it's lit. They can access both Acadian wifi and Wolfholt Farmer's Market wifi, if it's a spot just sort of as a hub. But there, they are, they tend to be kind of all over the place and for much longer than 10 minutes.
That's something that even if this bylaw was to pass, we could take a look at, because bylaw does enable Alex to designate those spots. So if that is a concern that council wants us to follow up on, we certainly can do that and look to see if there's a suitable spot for taxi-only parking.
Other questions, comments?
So at the end, we are, I just wanted to clarify. So we are going to move it for, with the small change of taking out the hours between, we're just putting 10 minutes period and taking out that one statement and everything else will stay the same. So if you want to designate parking, we can, because we don't, we don't. Okay.
Other questions, comments? Ready for the question? All those in favor of the motion as read and understanding that a small amendment has been made within the body of the document, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. So that is passed. And CEO will get back to us if there's anything that we need to address further. That brings us to a request for agenda item, crosswalk flags. And, um, Counselor McKay, I wonder if you'd like to see, brought that forward. I wonder if you would like to speak to that. I think what we will also do is have asked Alex to provide, that's what he's preparing for. He's going to make some comments. And then the question to council, is this something we want to direct staff to do at this point? So.
Do, do you want me to read the motion or would you like me to speak to it first?
No, no, I'd like you to, to speak to it first.
Sure. So over the last number of months, we've been having, uh, well, probably the last number of years, we've had lots of discussions on crosswalks. And lately, we've had a, a number of concerning emails on crosswalk safety. So I thought we, I made the suggestion for the motion to be brought forward. And in doing so, I did actually have a discussion with Alex, who will give us some insight. And I know we put a cross, crosswalk policy into place last summer. I'm going to make a guess at time. Um, and while I think that's going to be a useful tool, it is going to take us, uh, time to identify them, evaluate them, and implement a plan. Uh, so in the meantime, I was looking to bring forward crosswalk flags. So I, in the meantime, I had also called, um, or looked online and tried to find some information of what, um, other jurisdictions do. And they are in various places around. So Kentville does have them on their main street. Uh, Port Williams does have two in their, um, village, all of which are run by the, uh, village commission. They are not run by, uh, the, um, not-for-profit or volunteer organization as they are in some places like in Halifax. They do have one. And Halifax, I did, you can take one of these and pass it around. They actually did an administrative order to enable crosswalk flags to be put up by this society and put them in place. Uh, I actually, when I spoke to the gentleman who runs that organization, he also sent me some information because I wondered about the legalities, um, to which he sent me one, uh, just today from their opinion from Landry McGillbury. And their conclusion was, having reviewed your website and having been on the Waverly Road Crosswalk Flag Program in operation, he's carefully considered these concepts existing in Canadian and Nova Scotia legislation and common law. And there is no legal basis for any concern for the municipality or legal liability for injuries to pedestrians in crosswalks as a result of approving, facilitating, or implementing a crosswalk like program of the type instituted on this happened on this Waverly Institute. I also asked about, uh, because we've talked about it numerous times, that the crosswalk flags are not part of the TAC manual. And it is actually mute on that point. So it's muted on that point. Sorry. Silent. It does not speak to it. It says that they are, um, they aren't, recommend, they weren't for, uh, they weren't endorsed as one of the ones, but they, they weren't saying, don't use them. So it was actually silent on it, um, not to not use them. Because I think that was some of the discussions we had during our crosswalk policy was that the TAC man, they're not an approved, uh, traffic mitigation on the crosswalks. We're actually there, it just says nothing about them. So that was my research on it. So I passed this around. Um, I think they would be a useful tool. I think our, the members of our community are asking for them. Um, and I think that they would be no different than pressing the light and having it go, um, as waving a flag and literally maybe someone's face to say stop, because we are seeing a lot of, um, people being hit or close calls on the streets. Um, and in the meantime, this would just, couldn't just be a stopgap until, uh, Director Alex has, as his, uh, our director of public works and engineering, has some time to put into place the evaluation process that was put in the policy.
Director DeSousa, do you want to come up and do you have some points?
That's okay. Yeah. So I've, I've prepared a couple of brief notes here for, for discussion. Things that I want everyone around the table to consider before passing the motion. I, I'll keep it brief. I don't want to get too much into the crosswalk evaluation policy, because that's a separate item in my mind. Um, the crosswalk flags, I, I broke this down into three, three categories here. I've got a sort of a pros and cons with a couple of points in each. Uh, some of, some of the, the thoughts on the specific intersections that were suggested. And some of my recommendations as traffic authority. Um, so I'll start with the pros and cons. On the pros side, crosswalk flags, uh, they have no apparent reduction in pedestrian safety in my reading so far. Uh, despite not being endorsed by TAC, there's no evidence to say that they will reduce safety in our crosswalks. So that's a pro in my mind. Um, they do definitely increase visibility of pedestrians to drivers. Anybody walking with a bright orange flag is going to be more visible. That's, you can't dispute that. Um, and that these flag programs are typically community-led and community-funded efforts, meaning there's less risk to the town and there's fewer town resources divided to create and support a new program. Um, so that, that being a community program is a, a pro in my mind, how they're typically set up. Um, on the con side, uh, based on what I've read so far, uh, and this is mostly from data collected by HRM. Um, they've only shown marginal gains, uh, you know, plus or minus 5% uh, in driver yielding behavior. They are not tax-supported, as Counselor McKay mentioned, uh, TAC endorsed. I, I had in my notes here that that could be, that could lead to possible legal liability issues. Now, uh, I'm hearing that there's no precedent on that, but with that even, that's still in mind. We don't want to be the precedent for, for any issues like that. So that's on the con side for me. Practical limitations. The flags can be stolen or inevitably will end up all on one side of a crosswalk. And then someone will have to go and reset them. Um, and the last item I have on my cons list for now is COVID-19. Um, the current trend is to reduce the number of surfaces that people have to touch. Uh, and. Having a bucket full of flags definitely won't do that. So that's on the con side for me. The, that's the end of my pros and cons list. Some of my thoughts on the intersection suggested. So some of this may be new information because most of this is just in my notes and I have yet to to. Strategize and come up with a. A proper plan for these intersections. First one on my list is Gaspro and Pleasant. My belief is that this intersection is suitable for a four way stop. Given the the reported speeds of traffic entering town from the Gaspro Valley. The intersection geometry is also a little bit more complicated up there and obviously limited sightline visibility. So I have that on my on my plan. Hopefully would like to implement for the 2023. 24 fiscal year. Highland and Skyway is another one that was in this motion. Uh I believe this intersection may also be suitable for a four way stop for the same reasons as Gaspro and Pleasant. I I haven't assessed that one in much detail yet, but I will do that with Gaspro and Pleasant. Maple and Maine. This intersection, this crosswalk has been brought up by several residents and I've seen the emails. I would suggest that maybe this crosswalk be the first one we evaluate against our crosswalk evaluation policy. And the Larch crosswalk. I. My thought is that drivers failing to yield for pedestrians in this crosswalk may be out of frustration for having to wait. In traffic or wait at the four way stop. My opinion is the crosswalk flags won't help with driver frustration if if if. They're gonna go, they're gonna go regardless of whether someone's holding a flag. So those are my my comments on the intersections suggested. And then we come to my recommendations as traffic authority. I have two. The first being that council allow staff to provide. Information and written recommendations for council to evaluate. So in a for an informed decision can be made. The information and recommendations will consist of. Legal review or legal comment from the town's lawyer regarding. Liability related to pedestrian crossing treatments that aren't endorsed by the tax, the the tax, excuse me. The information would also include summary of relevant study data collected by other groups and jurisdictions. Will also include. An evaluation of an evaluate, the evaluation results of a crosswalk flag program against the guiding principles. Uh found in the tack pedestrian crossing control guide. And I'd also like to include some tack endorsed alternatives to the crosswalk legs to improve. Pedestrian safety in our crosswalks. So all of that was one recommendation. My second recommendation would would be that for any considered crosswalk flag program to be a community led. And community funded effort with input and approval from town staff similar to how HRM's program is configured. This could only follow any required updates and amendments to our crosswalk evaluation evaluation policy and streets by law. That's all I have.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the C O for some guidance here. We have a motion. Do we? Move this motion and depending on where it falls, then. Council could give staff a further a a direction to bring back what was suggested. Is that the way we deal with this?
Yeah, I would suggest that maybe having the discussion first to just see where you're at. And if you're prepared to make that motion, that's what you would do. And if you're prepared to direct Alex to come back with something more than. Yeah, I would have the discussion and then it can be determined what motion would go forward.
That was my confusion. All right. I open it up for discussion, Counselor Inum.
Thank you for both both presentations. They were very thorough. We have had a lot of emails regarding the safety at crosswalks. I believe there was an email down by the liquor store that somebody was anyways, but so that that has been on the top of of. My thinking. When you mentioned a community led program, is that something that we could start right away before and put that motion on? Before we do everything else? That's the first question. And looking at the motion that Council McKay put on here. There's two other streets that I actually think are more dangerous and it seems to me. That this the crosswalks that are dangerous are sort of like right after, right before or after the flashing lights that we sort of have. So the the first one that I think if we're gonna put this on as a pilot, there there's two more that I think. Need to be in the pilot. One of them is at the corner of Maine and Victoria because that crosswalk has been changed. Also, kids are coming to go to Rotary Park up that street. People are going into walk on the Harvest Moon Trail and the Dykes. That one is danger, that one to me is dangerous and I I stand there, sometimes I've counted 10 cars. And I actually do this, put my arm to to go across. So if I had a flag, it might be a little easier. And the second one is. Over Balcom Drive and Westwood on Main Street, that one seems to be, there's a lot of students crossing there and there's apartment buildings. That one to me. Is speeding up right after everybody's waited for the students to cross University Avenue. You're either speeding or coming up. So those ones. If you're gonna do a pilot on meet the the what was it Maple Avenue and Maine, I would like, I recommend those be included. I guess back to my first question about community led, does that enable the town to have less legal obligations? Or what what be thought process on that?
Uh I don't know the legal implications to having this a community. Community led effort versus a town led effort. That's something that I I believe we should consult with with our our. Legal counsel on to see what what sort of what the differences of liability would be for the two different programs. The the biggest thing for for me. For this being a community led program would be that it doesn't have to be funded by. Taxpayer dollars doesn't have to be monitored by the Public Works Department. And it doesn't take away from other things that we we need to deal with on a day to day basis. The community organization that that looks after this in Halifax and the the. HRM surrounding areas, my understanding is is very good. They're they're on the ball and they. Do go outside of HRM to help implement these programs. I don't know any more than that. At this point, I just I had a brief conversation with. With the the director of engineering and public works for Kentville this afternoon. And I believe those crosswalks were. The flags are placed at those crosswalks by this organization from Halifax. So. There is a possibility that they could do the same for us as well.
Definitely Mayor Madira Boss.
Thank you. I think everything I've heard and read suggests to me that these flags. Do not increase risk. And that's to me the most important thing that we're not doing something that's going to make it worse or less safe. Distracting or whatever. So I I think that that is very important. I take Director De Souza's point that in Halifax, they haven't seen. They've only seen marginal gains in driver yielding 5%, but that's still some gains, which I think is is good. But I think what this could do on the other side is help. With pedestrian behavior because I have seen people step out onto a crosswalk without waiting. Um and not really giving drivers much time to stop particularly on Main Street at the foot of my street. Which I know, I know we're not gonna put one there, but I mean, I've seen people just step, you know, instead of stop, look and point, which I think is what we were all. Taught to do as as children. People don't don't do that many cases and they don't realize. How quickly cars are moving. And so if we had something like this where people were at least encouraged to stop. Take a flag and stick it, you know, out there. It may just slow. Everybody, both sides of the equation down a little bit to prevent. So I think from from that perspective as well, I think. There's no risk, no harm, and why wouldn't we do something even if it is marginally better? These intersections, I I have to say, I know they're all very serious. Highland and and Skyway really scares me. Because of the bend in the trees and the visibility on that one is 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 pretty scary and I go up there a lot. Turn and and so I think anything that we can do to try to improve the the safety on these. And I I understand the concern around maintenance. But in some ways, I I would rather. It be at a town initiative because at least it shows that we are listening and we're trying to do what we can in the interim. Until staff can come back with very specific recommendations and we can budget effectively for those. Phased in approaches. I think we we definitely all agree that we need to do. Make them safer and do whatever we need, but we know that those costs are not going to be covered right away. And so as an interim step, as we phase in all these other responses, I I don't see what we would have to lose. And my other question though around is around the flags themselves, considering it's nighttime. Are these reflective flags? Are they? Because I've seen them out in the daytime. I've never seen in the communities where I've driven so. Port Williams around there. I've never seen them actually used when it's dark. And so I don't. I I just, it's just a practical question around whether or not they're reflective, whether, you know, are they only effective during the daylight?
So I I believe the flags that HRM uses are reflective and they're a they're a neon green color, I think, if I remember correctly. From their guidelines. Unfortunately, where this isn't a a standardized thing. There 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 really is no right way to do a a crosswalk flag, but logically. A reflective flag would make sense in my mind.
Counselor Elliott?
Um, I I have a scattering of thoughts around this topic. I definitely would like to CS pilot. At least one intersection until. Our director is able to look at all the parameters on this. I certainly agree with you about stop signs on those two intersections. Uh up at the top of town, it makes a lot of sense to me. I was in Kentville a couple of years ago. It was previous police chief and I ran into her on an intersection. And the fellow from HRM was there and talk about passionate. Oh, man, he's a believer. And the police chief was there because she wanted to see it in operation, which is one of the valuable things about having your own police force. There was a lot of interest about which intersections would be would be flagged and so on. So that I felt that that was a a positive in favor of the whole notion. So I I think it's worth a try.
Counselor Butler?
I will throw my five cents in as a as a full time walker, and I mean like 99.9% of the time. I feel unsafe probably 80% of the time walking across the crosswalks. I was very happy to see this on here. I have been hit, not hit, I've been. Um, actually, well, I've been hit twice, but I've been almost hit. I'd say six or seven times at the crosswalk by Larch and Maine. I think it is one of the most dangerous crosswalks we have. I read this and I saw this mainly as an educational tool. There are school zones. I think this entire town is a school zone because there are so many. Youngsters that walk and use the parks and do this, the school, I walk to school every day of my life. And I had some back roads to go down, which was great, but. You want to encourage safe walking spaces, especially in the downtown area. And it'd be nice to be able to say to your kids. Okay, go across the street and they actually have something they can use that is educating them to say. I'm about to walk, you stop. I am more important right now walking across this crosswalk. Even at my age, I would certainly use these in some areas around town. I like all of the ideas that that Director De Souza made about the four way stops and all that, but until those can be done. I think this is a really great tool to at least try out in the interim, just to try to. Educate first and like at least say, you know, there is a visible visible crosswalk here. And I think that it really will help. I know drivers get frustrated, but personally, as a full time walker, I don't quite care. Because it is a walkable town. They could have parked and walked and. I completely support this.
Just wondering if I if I can ask a question of Alex. So if this motion was to pass, what would the next steps in timeline look like in your mind? From a practical perspective, like what steps would have to happen and?
If I were to be directed to do this program myself, I would probably just copy the HRM guidelines. Because theirs are the the probably the best and clearest ones in the province. In terms of. Timelines, I can't really give you an answer on that right now. I've I've got a lot of irons in the fire and. Things like getting our Cherry Lane well back up in services at the top of my list. So. It would have to, it would have to be prioritized. But I could probably get something on the ground before before the Christmas holidays.
Counselor McKay?
Thank you. Thank you for everyone's input. I I do want to say. Director just sent me a note today and we did talk and I I just wanted to commend him because we had a really good discussion. And it was really. A discussion on how to keep everyone safe and that we were on the same team and had the same value system. So I just wanted to give him kudos for that because I think that's. A great thing for us to have between staff and council. So. So thank you for that. I'm I think your comments on the four way stop at the two at the top of the hill. Solidify our concerns or community concerns that those are unsafe. I think again. If we were to put crosswalk flags there, it would literally be the stopgap until you could evaluate that to, you know, the guidelines that you need to do. Um and follow. I think that would be incredible. And then if we were to pilot some in the places that we felt were, you know. That the community is at least reaching out to us. And I think I said this to you. I think our community gives us the best knowledge that we can have. I don't walk. Victoria and Maine every single day. I might walk it twice a week, but I don't do it every day. And for those of the community members that tell us that these, this is where they don't feel safe. I think us listening and giving them a. A safe space to walk around is important. So I but thank you, Alex, for for your time on that today and for your input tonight. Appreciate it.
So a few comments. I'm I must say I am concerned about the staff time. This is, this is an add on and I and I know our staff are are full out. I am concerned. That we don't have answers to the legal question. I would have preferred, I would prefer to send this back to staff to get some of those questions answered. I don't know if there is a community volunteer group. I don't know. I I don't know if the group that is in Halifax that supported. Kentville also helped set up a community volunteer group. Those are, those are things that I would like to know. The other thing that concerns me and I do walk across most of those crosswalks every every few weeks anyways. And as as we have all experienced, the number of people, and I'm not sure holding a flag would be any different, who just. Come to the crosswalk and and just walk. And that happens, like it is scary to be a driver in this town too. The the. So I would be, I would wonder if having, just having picked up a flag and walking is, if somebody is going to do. This as Jen says, she does, she she does that. I I wait until somebody has stopped. Yeah. But anyway, so those are, those are things that I I worry about and and it would be my preference to. To ask staff to come back with some of those answers. But anyway, so those are, those are things that I I worry about and and it would be my preference to, to ask staff to come back with some of those answers. And I guess that's, I I won't support this. Although I do support the program, I have supported it in the past, but I now am conscious that there may be some legal implications for the town. I'd like to know that before I would jump into this. I also would like to know what the impact on our staff time. Getting the Cherry Lane well up is absolutely number one priority. And so for those reasons, I, while I support the program, I would like a little more time. I'd like a little more information. But that's, that's just I, I do support. I guess I feel, Councilor McKay, like, like you did on the the site. I I like the idea, but I I feel that there, there could be unintended, unintended consequences or impacts of this that I just don't have the answers to now. I hadn't even thought until you mentioned it that there might be different legal implications if it was a community group rather than the town. And and maybe it's not as big as, as it might be, or maybe it is. So those, those would be my concerns. Councilor Elliott?
I'm just wondering what the C O would recommend at this point. Do we put it off for a month or what do you think?
Well, it's, it's at the will of council. One of the things I was going to mention is that one of the project charters that you have in your package for Thursday is mobility and traffic safety because we recognize this is a key area that council wants to address. And some of the comments that things have come piecemeal, I think it was made in the context of something else. But it's nice to see the whole picture of what's happening from a traffic calming, intersection, crosswalk perspective. So if there was the willingness or direction to take a bit of time and come back with more information, we could actually continue this conversation on Thursday and take some time to go through that charter and really hammer out the things you want to see. And Alex could come back with a report. Or alternatively, if a motion was to pass tonight, we would go away and probably still come back just to do a check-in in in December to see where we're at, as is mentioned. You know, we probably could get done before the holiday break, but there's some other things on Alex's plate right now. Probably would still run it by legal just so that you would have that, even if the direction was to go forward. And then just to try to source them and see if somebody could work with us. One of the things that the questions is going through my mind, and I just read it, was that the administrative order that H R M has, there's criteria for placement of crosswalk flags at the engineer reviews. And when Alex said that he would likely adopt those, I'm not sure that all four of those intersections actually meet that criteria. So I'd want him to just look at that, too, or we'd have to adapt the criteria. And I haven't, I've just read it on my desk, so I don't know. But I just flagged, flagged that. I just flagged that for, for consideration. But I mean, it's yeah, it's really the will of council, but I do know how important this file is. And I I totally understand why Councilor McKay's brought it forward. And we've heard a lot from our residents. And I know, you know, when Alex got in the chair, this has been a key piece and he wants to really dig into the traffic authority side of it. So, yeah, we are on, we are all on the same team. We do want to improve the safety. So.
What is the pleasure of council? We do have a, a, a motion. It's not on the table yet, or we could have a different motion. Councilor McKay?
So even though, I mean, I've had the conversations with these organizations. So I can see that the legal doesn't happen. I know Lunenburg Greenwood, like he gave me the gentleman who I'm sure Councilor Elliott spoke to was the same norm and he is, has been at this for, I think it's 20 years or something, a long time. And so gave me a ton of information. And so even though they got a legal opinion, I would say if this, that would be the only caveat for me would be, is, does that put us in a, in a place of liability? I can't see how it would, given many other jurisdictions do it. Port Williams does it, Greenwood, Lunenburg, like all kinds of other ones. But if that was, if that was a stumbling block, I would say that would be it. And I, I think Director De Souza, because we picked some of the same places that we're clearly seeing problems in those areas. So depending on the timeframe and what that would look like coming back, I think also sending back staff to do a report to come back to us, have the same conversation again is almost a waste of time. Because he's still going to have to do the work on a report to bring it back to us again. So I I'm struggling with the fact of, oh, let's just write another report and bring it back and have another discussion when we already have a crosswalk policy that we just passed. So again, I think this would only be a stopgap, borrowing legal opinion. Because he's going to need time with his staff to go and do all of those evaluations. So writing a report to come back to tell us the same things seems redundant and a waste of Alex's time.
Yeah, and the only reason I asked Alex kind of in real time around the timing for implementing is if he had those two of the four in mind for four-way stops and the timeframe for implementing that was similar to the timeframe to getting flags in. That was really the reason I asked that because some of those we might be able to go a bit further than the flags quicker or at the same pace than flags. So I just threw that in the mix for consideration. Some of them clearly aren't maybe in the same boat, but.
Deputy Mayor?
Could we just amend this instead of saying this motion, the specific intersection, say, at designated intersections, so that not list them because we may find that once the criteria is established, there could be others that are added or make some changes out of there.
I think that was what he was going to do if we provide his staff direction. The report would, that he, that staff would bring back, am I correct, C O or Alex, would be to identify those intersections?
Yes.
I can see the importance of that because I know you mentioned before, Alex, that if we were going to do a pilot project, we would just start off at Maple and Maine. But if, if doing a pilot project on just one crosswalk doesn't seem enough, like, do you know what I mean? You'd have to add them all right away. So would the motion be different? Do you know what I mean? Like, my concern is safety for everybody. That's just safety at that one crosswalk. What about the other one? So I wouldn't want to put a motion on the floor for just one crosswalk and make that the pilot. You see what I'm saying? So I don't, I don't know where I stand on that because, I mean, ultimately, I think every counselor around the table is concerned about, you know, safety. We're kind of like, safety is paramount, right? And so that's why I guess we're trying to move things. Yeah.
Councilor Ingram, I just want to clarify my comment on the, the Maple and Maine. It was to evaluate that crosswalk against our crosswalk evaluation policy as, as the first crosswalk that we apply that. That decision, that decision major X to. That was all, that was.
I'm wondering if you want to put your motion on the floor and see where it goes. Well, the motion is, as Councilor McKay has. But then if that doesn't pass, then we may have another motion. Or or what is your? Councilor McKay, would you like to put a motion on the floor?
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So, uh, what would be the time? Because I might amend that if I have, it depends what the answer is. What is the timeline to look at the four-way stops at the top of Highland?
Gasboro.
And Gasboro and Pleasant and Highland Skyway.
So Pleasant and Skyway would be easier because there's no construction going on there right now. Highland's a little bit more complicated. But Pleasant and Gasboro, I could look at that immediately. Budget-wise, I don't know. I don't have an idea of what it will cost to, to implement a four-way stop there. There's going to be some, there's a flashing light above that intersection that would have to get altered. Obviously, new signage, larger signage, advanced warning signage and rumble strips or something similar. I, I don't like, I don't like to say rumble strips because they're a nuisance, but there are other technologies now that do the same thing without making noise to nearby residents. So those are items that I would have to look at and price out and see where, where they could fit. I know, I know we had a capital budget item for traffic safety this, this past year that wasn't completely used up. So there may still be some room in that for, for some of this work to happen immediately.
Okay, so my thought is if that is something that we can give direction to, that that could be looked at, then I would take that one sort of off the table and leave the remaining, and and I sort of, and I understand that Balcom and Maine was an issue as well. I actually picked ones that were maybe less likely to go missing. If I can say that. So that's why I sort of picked those ones as well to to pilot because those were the ones that were, I think, were there. So I'm going to, can I see the motions, please? Thank you. Go get mine printed off. So I'm going to amend it slightly. That council install crosswalk flags as a pilot at the intersections of Maple and Maine, Highland and Skyway, and in front of the Larch on Main Street until such time where intersections come up, can come up for review under our crosswalk policy.
And it's understood that this will be managed by our staff.
Yes.
Understood by council.
And we'll get a legal, get a legal opinion.
Those are the three that you're suggesting for the pilot.
Pilot, yes.
I still, I still really like Victoria and and Main Street just for the fact of how many kids are going on that area. I really would like to have to add that one.
Yeah, yeah. If I could just, in the project charter that is in your package for Thursday, Alex has identified what was on staff's radar for about doing the full evaluation. So he had Pleasant and Yuron, Gasboro and Pleasant, Maine and Maple and Maine and Victoria for sort of the key, the key ones that were identified. So just, that one will be covered through that evaluation.
So are we okay? Well, I'll leave the motion on the floor as it is and.
Somebody like to second, oh, Wendy seconded that. Can I ask a question of staff? Is it possible to ballpark how much staff time you feel a pilot would take?
I've already, myself personally, I've already sunk at least a day into this. It's.
I, I'm more thinking of maintaining the flags and and checking that they're there, like what, what is involved is your guess?
Yeah, so, so there's, there's, there's a lot of moving parts, not just the staff, but communications, community involvement as well. In, in terms of our public works crew, it won't take very long for them to install a bucket with legs and hose clamps and as long as all the signs and poles and things like that are there already, it won't take very long for them to do that. I don't know what kind of maintenance requirements these things are going to take, whether they all go missing or they all end up on one side or on the ground. I don't, I, I don't know. I have no idea what, what kind of time commitments that's going to be on a regular basis. I, I expect people, if, if things happen, if they get damaged, if they get vandalized, stolen, we're going to probably receive a higher volume of calls, complaints from residents who are expecting them to be there and they're not. It's just impossible to say.
Well, thank you. That, that tells me information I also didn't know about. Hadn't thought about communications as well. Any other questions, Councilor Ingham?
Nope, sorry.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? That passes. All right, we are, have a motion to adjourn to in camera, please. And seconded. Councilor Elliott, all in favor, please, in paper saying aye. Aye, we are in camera. Thank you. Staff?